Call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
All the aldermen are present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlyle. Jamie Maitred. Tim Gregwitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Anissa McCaskill. Chuck Schaefer. Debbie Belleville. Bob Sabo.
Here.
Chief Clay is here and Chuck Schaefer is excused tonight, he's still on vacation. All the other apartment heads, I believe everybody's present. At this time we have Boy Scout Troop 553 from Corpus Christi, is that correct? They're here tonight and they're here working on a mayor badge or two, particularly communications, I believe, and if they're gonna ask us and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you gentlemen. I want to remind you that the meeting, as it's been for some time now, is being video recorded. Please aldermen use the microphones and, in public, if you do get recognized to be speak tonight, please come to the microphone in the middle and please use the microphone when you address the council. Public participation will begin just a moment. When you, when I do indicate we're gonna start public participation, please raise your hand, wait till you're recognized, come to the microphone, give your name, keep your comments to about two to three minutes, hopefully pertaining to something here tonight that's on the agenda or for the good of the city that has a merit to the city's, the city's business. We do not have a public hearing this evening, so the last thing I want to say before we start public participation is, I also want to make sure that we do cover the weather and emergency procedures. If we did have some severe storms or something on a night when we're in this room, the police officers or staff that's present would kinda usher you across the lobby, right across from the clerk's desk, there's a set of stairs down the basement, which is our storm shelter area that we would all gather into until it was safe to reconvene up here. If we had some reason, we had to vacate the building for smoke or fire or whatever, we would ask that you go out the front door orderly and quietly, carefully cross the street and meet in front of the county courthouse's big sign, and we would try to kinda talk to each other and make sure that everybody who was sitting near us, that we did have them accounted for. It'll, that type of, that type of cooperation helps with our emergency responders. So with that said, I'm gonna open public participation. If anyone would like to speak tonight, please raise their hand now. Yes ma'am?
Two negative Lilly and Schneider. Two nineteen Kansas Avenue Belleville. All sewer and trash bills paid with no six water shut-off notices. My first item that I want to speak of is a neighborhood watch meeting to discuss the stormwater and sanitary stores, April twenty-seventh at seven eight PM at fourteen hundred North Charles Jefferson School. Royce Carlyle, Director of Wastewater, and Randy Smith, Assistant Director of Wastewater, will attend to provide an overview and answer questions about the recent, recently completed and future neighborhood sewer projects. Okay. Whatever happened to partnering with Lindenwood to do our city council meetings live? Was not, was that not paid for? The city in Lindenwood was waiting for a fiber optic line to our, for the city hall to do this. Plus, our swimming pool Lindenwood was going to partner with. And now, back to the good old hotels. Where and what, where and what kind? All we have is coming soon. What is coming soon? It was put on black and white print. I said no. Could I have had a reason? Now, what's the city's reason for no hotels? And I mean hotels, not even one. Not, I am proud, I said no. And what's the city's reason and the aldermen that voted yes on this? What's their reasoning that we don't have a hotel?
Thank you. Yes sir.
Allen Avenue, seven fifty-four Hundred Road Belleville. Just a couple of questions. I'd like to sometime tonight, this evening, get an update on the, it was four, I don't know, four months ago or so, it was a, it was a proposal or talk about a Dunkin' Donuts that, on the east end, that take the place of the rallies that would be torn down at the Carlyle Plaza, Dunkin' Donuts was gonna go in there and build. So I'd like an update on that. And same as Ms. Schneider here, you know, where are the hotels for the shrine development? And the last thing I have is item eleven A dash six is a motion to approve a change order for the police department project phase one. When we get to that, I'd like to know how much that costs? How much money is this change order involved? May not be any money, but probably it is. And why is there a change order? Who's at fault? Why was there a change order? That's all I got.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes ma'am?
Diane Rogie. In November, Dr. Barger and Dr. Wingo, along with numerous LU employees, stood before this council and many of the residents and painted a beautiful picture of LU student life. Most of you swallowed a hook, line, and sinker, but I'm here to tell you, you were lied to. You were told that this was a drug and alcohol-free campus and that it would not be tolerated with a zero tolerance policy. I can tell you for a fact that that is not true. Even the students who have been caught are not punished. You were told that there was a twenty-four hour security with hourly monitoring through the neighborhoods. Again, this is not true. We recently found out that, from one of the students, that most of the cameras don't even function. You were told that LU administration wants to be good neighbors, but actions speak much louder than words. I have left fourteen messages on different phones for everything from security to Dr. Wingo, and I've not gotten one response. We residents have been to the most recent council, the housing meeting, and to the fire and police with our, asking for assistance, and here are the main issues. Parties, 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 with the drinking and the noise in the late hours of the night, occupying basements that have bars on the windows. When we call the police, they scatter like cockroaches in daylight. They've got scanners and there's, there's nothing that you can do about that, but they're, they monitor what's going on, you're never gonna catch 'em. Parking everywhere they want, in the yards, blocking, paying residents driveways, tax-paying residents. On the streets directly in front of the empty Lindenwood-only parking lots. They park on the street in front of it, but not in it. Trash, the trash, they, Dr. Wingo told us that they had partnered with the city for the, the two thousand block, and that they would be picking the trash up by the city. Doctor, Mr. Sabo informed us that that is not true. If it isn't for the fact that I have to call this in every week or so to housing, that trash that's there, they put it in a shed, they just pile it in there until some raccoon or something starts scattering it all over the yards. Had to call it in the last two times to get it picked up. They're supposed to be driving through there, you would think security would see that pile of garbage, but apparently, they don't, they just don't see that. And now, in the last month, we have the bonfires in the backyard. A circle of bricks in a yard that's four foot wide is not a recreational fire. Then they back their trucks up to it so they can warm their feet on the flames. This is an accident waiting to happen. Remember, these are the same students that the city spent thirty thousand dollars to study how to help them cross, in a crosswalk. Since March sixteenth, we have had fourteen fires. One day last week, they had a fire during the day and they all took their shirts off and stood out there and laid in the sun with a fire burning. It was like, okay, guess they wanted a tan. The handbook doesn't allow them to have a grill, the Lindenwood handbook doesn't allow them to have a grill, but we're allowing them to have six-foot flames. I think there's a problem. Two of the nights that they burned, the National Weather Service had a burn ban, so they aren't checking any of the weather, they just, whenever they want, because there is no repercussions. This city doesn't do anything, and these kids are getting by with anything they want. We were told by, earlier this month, or earlier this year, Alderman Bitner and I were told by their second-in-command and security, Ryan Anderson, that he has been instructed not to speak to either of us. So my challenge is to the other fifteen aldermen here, could somebody please call Lindenwood and get us some answers? Because apparently, they are not gonna talk to us, but we would like to know as residents, and we would also like to know, when is the meeting scheduled? We have students who want to participate in the meeting with Lindenwood and the residents that you promised, the last two meetings that you would get done. We have students who want to participate, they're gonna leave as soon as the semester's over, so we need to get this scheduled.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes sir, in the front row.
Michael Hagberg. Want to expand a little bit on the Lindenwood area. I noticed that they're the one business on West Main up in that area that has city-owned trash cans throughout their campus. I believe they're city-owned because I had a, I saw a city Belleville worker emptying them. Are those the city-owned trash cans that are chained to the light fixtures up in that area? Or are those Lindenwood trash cans?
I don't know where you mean, mister.
It's on West Main Street. If you go up, you'll see the decorative trash cans.
On the street?
Out by the street, yeah.
Well, we might have replaced them with some of our, we've had trash cans along there ever since it was Belleville West High School.
Okay. I'm just saying that.
It's probably in the exact same places now. If Chuck put some of the new ones with lids on there, only because some of the old ones that we had are extremely expensive to replace. Right, Tim? They might have used some of the new blue toders.
No, they're not the blue toders, they're the decorative steel ones or, you know, metal ones.
Okay, if they had enough of them, that's probably what they did, but trash cans have been there.
Are those available to other businesses along West Main Street?
I, I think if there's a trash problem, Mr. Schaefer will work with and Mr., in cooperation, talking to Mr. Sabo as well, we'll try to be cooperative if there's, you know, we've got trash cans by a lot of the bus stops in town, et cetera, trying to make sure that we provide a place for people to put their trash. If you, the one trash can you're talking about, that's always full there, Twenty-Second Street is right by a bus stop, I believe, and it's full often, and we, we do empty it, but it's, it's, the city does provide that one.
Thank you.
We, we figure if they put it in a can, it sure helps us. Okay? Yes sir, in the back of the room.
Stuart Lanard, three eighteen South Twenty-Ninth Street Belleville. Lindenwood never did respect Belleville ever since they moved into town. They decided they're gonna have ten or fifteen, twenty students in all them single-family houses, whether Belleville liked it or not, and that's what they got now. And they're driving their golf cart, it's not one of their police golf carts either, they're driving one of them golf carts again all over town, I just seen it today. And, public participa, public participation, all that needed is B, regulation, B and E. And the shrine project looks like it's getting off to a, to a slow start. I thought a study was always made to determine where and how many customers will be in an area to use, four hotels, a Hitler-type beer garden, and a convenience store and gas station. And I think the NGA decision should stand, as I don't see any good coming out of stirring everybody up on the Missouri side of the river and on this side of the river. Well, I think we should just keep our mouths shut. They made up their mind, and there's, and by us. Then integrating the Corps of Engineers, there's a bunch of clowns, and the Corps of Engineers used to be a premier organization, I guess, until liberals got a hold of it.
Okay, Stuart, Stuart. Stuart, we're, we, the city of Belleville has no control over the Corps. We have, whether any of us in this room are for or against NGA, we have no, we have no direct correlation with that. We're, we're here to listen to Belleville concerns.
Here's what I'm saying though. This, we don't live in a little bubble here in Belleville. What affects, what happens in the bigger world also affects Belleville. What happens in St. Clair County affects Belleville, and so, we gotta take into account the bad things that are happening in St. Clair County also affects Belleville. And I'm just saying, I'm not saying Belleville has anything to do with the Corps of Engineers, but by calling the Corps of Engineers a bunch of incompetent, uh, keystone cops is not a way to make, you know, I don't see no point in it.
Okay.
They made their decision, and I, and if they change their mind, it's gonna make everybody look totally stupid over there for, I just don't think it's gonna happen. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public participation. We have, I think I already said we had no public hearing this evening, and we have no presentation recognitions or appointments tonight. I, I do want to make one correction, I didn't catch Dallas today. At the next meeting, there will be a recommendation, as well as there'll be an ardentance at the next meeting pertaining to the township, the, dissolving the township. Garrett didn't want me to bring the task force forward until the same night that we had the ardentance to first terminate the township and accept it, and then that same night, we'll have the task force. So that's why, in his recommendation to me as to procedure, I never really gave that a lot of thought, so I certainly would listen to the attorney. So the next meeting, we will have those two items on the agenda. Okay, moving forward, we move to the regular portion of the meeting. Approval of the minutes from the city council, April fourth, and before I ask for a motion, I just want to say, I want to thank Phil Sillsby and for all of your cooperation. I did sneak out that night, one of the few times in the years, except for a couple deaths in my family. My wife and I took off for our thirtieth anniversary for a few days off, so I thank you, Phil, for, for managing things during that April fourth meeting. So at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to approve, accept and file the city council meeting minutes of April fourth, two thousand sixteen. Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Bitner, any discussion? All in favor of accepting and filing those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Claims, payroll and dispersments, we have, I'm asking for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of two million, two eighty-three, seven seventy-six point forty cents, and the payroll of eight hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second? Alderman Pusa, do I hear discussion? All in favor of paying the claims and payroll and filing the reports for audit signify by saying, oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a treasurer's report from March two thousand sixteen, and also a statement of cash and investment report of March two thousand sixteen. I would ask for a motion to accept and file for audit those two reports. Motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Seibert, discussion? All in favor to accept and to file for audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go to oral reports. The first one is finance, Alderman Sillsby. I don't know if any of you want to do these all separate or any of them together, but I'll ask you to, yes sir?
Can we separate out A six? Read the rest of them together.
A six, okay, we can do that. R, you might not care if you had the explanation first, you want to hear that?
Yeah, let's hear it, then we can do them all together.
Kenny, 'cause it's pretty, it's a favorable explanation. Right Kenny?
Yes sir. Change order number three is actually a deduct in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
So it's not an increase, it's a deduct.
It's a deduction of sixteen thousand.
I'll change my motion to read them all together.
Okay, so, does anybody else have a problem with reading them all together? Then I will ask, turn to Alderman Sillsby to make his motion and read these requests from finance.
Okay, Your Honor, on behalf of the finance committee, I'll make the following motions. Motion to approve the contract with impact strategies for public building improvements phase two, city hall renovations. Motion to approve asbestos consulting services proposal for the building, public building improvements phase two, city hall renovations. Motion to approve the low bid of ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollars from Midwest Service Group for the police annex building asbestos abatement. Motion to approve the low bid of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight from Freeman Environmental for city hall building asbestos abatement. Motion to approve the low bid of seventy-eight thousand from S. Schaefer, Escavating Incorporated for police annex building demolition. Motion to approve the change order with impact strategies for building, public building improvements phase one, police department project. Motion to approve the SCBA equipment financing with the bank of Belleville at one point eight oh five percent for four years. Motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget, and motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the finance director, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion on any of those motions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries on quite a bit of business, so I thank you. We move now to economic development, Alderman Kinsella.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a development agreement with Narcom two thousand Incorporated for the remodeling of one oh five to one ten West Washington.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella.
It's one oh seven, isn't it supposed to be?
One oh seven. Motion by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Kinsella.
Make a motion to approve a development agreement with St. Clair County Event Center LLC for the construction of an event center and restaurant at fifteen fifty East State Route fifteen.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Seibert, discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're asking for a motion to release a request for proposals for the redevelopment of the mayor of the home property. I think you've all been pretty much informed and realized, we worked hard, Eric spent a lot of time, we met, the committee met, we thought we had a, a very good possibility and a strong, strong lead on a development partner for that property, and the longer we met, the more we got farther apart. Things he said repeatedly in the beginning went the other direction. So tonight, while we had nothing to dismiss from that gentleman, because we never got far enough to have any action, but we spent a lot of time with him, tonight we ask that both the committee and staff, we all feel very strong that as long as we've been patient and waited on this, that to go out for a request for additional proposals is the right thing to do. Motion by Alderman Galetti, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm asking for a motion from the planning commission, a motion to approve the final plat for St. Clair County Event Center, fifteen thirty East State Route fifteen, parcel number thirteen dash zero one point zero four hundred dash zero two eight point. The planning commission made a motion to approve this request. Motion by Alderman Dillman, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Hazel, discussion on this? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Yes sir?
I just want to make sure that it's noted well that the planning commission is, was concerned at their meeting about the parking for the plat.
Is this on the one for the? I'm sorry?
We're looking at the other one still, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're, the first, the first motion is for Mr. Yocas's.
I follow.
Okay, so that wasn't discussion there, so, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa. Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. I now ask for a motion to approve the recommendation, to approve the site plan for Missionary Ventures Shrine Development. Planning Commission made a motion to approve the request with the recommendation that the developer consider additional parking. We have a motion by Alderman Wiggington, who is the second? Second by Alderman Anthony. Let me just say that a lot of discussion has been held with the developer this past week, and with many of you, and the chairman of the planning commission, and, and everybody's in agreement, they are continuing to look at, but they are following our current standards that we have on the books currently. And as we explained to many of you who did call, Anissa does have in her budget this year, and we're proposing again the next year's budget, as much as $50,000 each year, that we do take that big leap of faith and redo our zoning ardentances, which are long overdue. You know, we did the comp plan first, now we're doing codification. Garrett and I met for an hour this evening before this meeting on those updates, we're getting closer, and then next thing would be the zoning code. But we can't make them adhere to something. In the meantime, Attorney Harner has told the commission members, several, and staff, et cetera, that if they propose some changes, or improvements, or additions, or corrections to our current code, send them to the ardentance committee. There's nothing saying that we can't take action before the, the future of the changes in the, in the zoning code, but we can't adhere people to something that isn't passed yet. So we are communicating with them, they've assured me, the developer assured me this weekend, that, believe me, they're going to make sure there's enough plant, parking, because they do not want to chase anybody off, that they can't find a place. They're very conscious of this, and they are following our current rules. Does that answer everybody's questions?
Pretty much, I just want to reiterate it. I agree the project should go forward as it is, and I believe that for their own sake, the developers are going to look at this and compare it to something that's reasonable, because we don't really have anything addressing in our code, and I think they would obviously be in their best interest.
Well, they couldn't agree more, because like they've told me, they're investing way too much money to cut themselves short. So they're going to be, they're constantly studying this. So who made the original motion? I believe it was Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Anthony, to approve the recommendation that I understand did come from them, the planning commission unanimously, I believe, right, Anissa? Okay, so, roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to the next page. From traffic, I think, Alderman White.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. Based on additional information brought to the traffic committee, I would like to make the motion that the item E1 be tabled and referred back to the traffic committee for further consideration. That's the motion to create a four-way stop on East B at Oak Street. So moved, Your Honor.
So we're tabling the first motion?
Table it, send it back to traffic.
Motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Seibert, to table till the city engineer and the traffic committee can give further study. All in favor of that motion to table signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman White, the next one?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Again, the last one is a motion to create a stop sign on West A Street where it intersects with North 33rd Street, and have the proper ordinance drawn.
We have a motion by Alderman White, second? Second by Alderman Randall. Question was brought to me, and I guess, did we do some research? Has this intersection been one of our previous, or was that not true?
We looked at it, Your Honor, and the way it intersects, East, A Street out there goes a variety of directions.
Right.
It intersects directly with 33rd Street, there's not a stop sign there now, and 33rd Street has the majority of the traffic.
Okay.
So it was felt that we didn't, by staff and by the committee, that we didn't have to do any other stuff.
Okay, I was thinking, somebody brought to my attention, I was thinking there was one there years ago, and sometimes, you know, when they get knocked down, they don't get put back up. So that's what I was just, you know, and I know Chuck's off tonight, but you might, Tim, let's, let's make sure with Carol, or let's research the, not that it's probably needs to be done, and we'll give them a movement here tonight, but it, somebody brought to my attention, I don't even know who called my office, said it might be one that was already on the books, just got never put back up. So we can check that. But with that, we have a motion to create this if necessary, and have the proper ardentice drawn. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Seibert, we have a motion from Streets and Grades.
Yes, sir, Your Honor. I have recommendations from Streets and Grades and the city engineer to approve RJN Group in the amount of $1,500 to perform engineering services for Phase Two stormwater permit. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Dillman, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications?
Yeah. Communication from Minister Frank Wagner requesting use of the small community park on the corner of East Main and North Church. The theme for this community outreach will be the Circle of Remembrance. This event is free to the public, the dates we would like to use the area will be May 22nd, 2016, June 12th, 2016, June 19th, 2016, and July 10th, 2016, and July 17th, 2016, August 14th, 2016, August 21st, 2016, September 11th, 2016, and September 28th, 2016. The time for each of these dates will be from 2:00 PM through 4:00 PM. This community outreach will be a musical with 15 to 20 people, and remain open for anyone from the public to stop by and enjoy the performance at no charge. 12B, communication from Eckert Florist Incorporated requesting permission to locate a refrigerated cooler in one of our designated loading zones located in the first block of North Second Street. The refrigerated cooler is necessary for our extra flour storage on Mother's Day and Christmas products. The refrigerated cooler will be in place on Sunday, May 1st, 2016, and removed on or before Sunday, May 15th, 2016, and the week of November 20th, 2016, and removed the week of December 25th, 2016, the same as last year. The cooler will be placed in a parking spot already designated as a loading zone associated with our business. Additionally, Eckert Florist Incorporated will coordinate with the Belleville Street Department to appropriately locate the required cones and lighted barricades to protect the safety of drivers.
Got two communications, do I hear motion? Motion to approve, Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Elmore. Discussion?
Here, Mayor.
I do have a question.
He can go first.
What church does Reverend Frank Wagner represent? Didn't say in the, in the communication.
You know, he's done this before. I, I, he does have a church.
The address is St. Matthews.
I, I.
I believe Mr. Wagner, or Minister Wagner is out there.
Okay, I'm sorry, Frank, I didn't see you. You can answer that?
Yes. I'm at St. Matthews, United Methodist.
And, are we talking about Everton and On Park?
Yes. Right?
That's.
Right.
Just for the record, that's Mascota and East Main.
No, it was, it's at St. Charles.
Oh, you, you're talking about the little courtyard there, Church Street?
Yeah, we, last year we were there.
Okay, same place, so it is, Gaslight, Gaslight Plaza.
All right.
Okay.
And last but not least, does this church provide the city with a certificate of liability insurance?
No, all right, let me back up. We're there for Circle of Remembrance, and every year I do this at the Ladies of the Snow. It's just a organization that's formed to keep the legacy alive for our, our lost loved ones. So every year, we just do it once a year at Ladies of the Snow, but I use that as a venue for the families to come and just, you know, to learn more about Circle of Remembrance and what we're doing, where we're going to be at in October.
You've done it before, several times.
Yes, sir, yeah.
And it sounds like a wonderful program.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, we don't require certificates of insurance when people are using city property?
We have on certain occasions, especially with different physical activities and different things, we'll have to look into it, but for, for a gathering there at the Plaza, basically sharing information, to my knowledge, we haven't made him provide that and spend that money in the past.
Okay.
Okay?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the 12B, the cooler, my question is, if someone would hit that cooler, there would be an accident, a traffic accident, somebody banged into it, who would be, would the city be?
No different than anybody else that hits somebody that's in that loading zone there.
Okay, would the city, could the city be sued?
Well, the city can always be sued, but we have no liability on that.
Okay.
And, and it's a, it's a loading zone that we're giving permission to, to allow the business to, to do this.
So there's no liability if somebody would wreck into it? Who's insurance would take care of it?
We have two motions for communications here tonight. We have a motion, and we have a second to approve. If there's no further questions, I'll just ask for all those in favor of approving these two motions signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's carry. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Resolution 3260, 3261, 3262, and 3263.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert, to read those four resolutions by title only.
And as a group.
And as a group, if that doesn't, does that offend anybody? Proceed. All in favor by reading them as title only and by a group, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, resolution number 3260, inducement resolution. 14B, resolution number 3261, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2015 and ending on the May, on the 30th day of April 2016. 14C, resolution number 3262, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2015 and ending on the 30th day of April 2016. 14D, resolution number 3263, resolution authorizing bank loan for SCBA equipment.
Motion to approve, resolution 3260, 61, 62, and 63. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion on those four resolutions?